Hello, boys and girls. Welcome to another episode of the Chrissy Mayer Podcast. We are on iTunes, YouTube, Spotify, SoundCloud, everywhere. Thank you so much for listening. Please leave us a five-star review if you're listening on iTunes. The album is coming out March 15th. I'll let you guys know as soon as preorder is available. I'm gonna be planning a whole tour, a whole promo tour for this album. Very excited about it. Live from January 6th, it's gonna be called. Got a bunch of stand-up gigs coming up. Comedians of the Compound will be coming back to Governors in Levittown, Long Island, February 26th, and then I'm heading to the Wormhole Comedy Club in Savannah, Georgia, March 19th. SideSplitters in Tampa, Florida, March 20th. Then Comedians of the Compound will be heading back to Atlantic City, April 22nd and 23rd. So excited to make funnies for you. Guys, we have a new sponsor for the podcast this week. This is very exciting. I've never had another podcast sponsor the podcast before, but hey, first time for everything. Have you guys checked out the Tower Power Hour Podcast? It's this funny libertarian-centric podcast hosted by Clint Russell from Liberty Lockdown, Reed Coverdale from Naturalist Capitalist, plus Cole Toad and Jose. It's live every Wednesday night at 9:00 PM Eastern. You can check it out on YouTube, Odyssey, and anywhere else you can get your podcast content. I've been a guest on it and they've made possibly their smartest decision ever by actually sponsoring me, this podcast. So we already know that they have good taste, but now, come on, it's worth checking it out. Just check it out, guys. Who? Who have they had on besides me? Dave, you ask? Dave Smith, Shoe On Heads, Spike Cohen, and a couple of my buddies, Josh Denny and Crip Daddy. Go check them out. Tell them I sent you and let them know that their money was well spent. Tower Power Hour Podcast. Check them out on YouTube. Look at this gay photo they sent for me to show. Isn't that great? Check them out. Speaking of gay, I'm so excited for our next guest. He's a delight. He's kind of blowing up and it's pretty, I'm getting him at an opportune time because I think he's in the midst of yet another viral video. You may know him as Primetime99. I know him as my good friend Alex Stein. Wow, look at you with the cat.
Okay, first and foremost, yes, I'm only gay when I transitioned to Alexandria because I'm always into chicks. I always like pussy, as you can see right here. So I'm a Caitlyn Jenner, I'm a Caitlyn Jenner trans. I'm gender fluid. So when I transitioned to Alexandria, I'm like Caitlyn Jenner. I still like to be with girls. So in that sense, I am gay and in that sense, you know, I appreciate that. I love being a gay icon. That's actually one of my favorite things. So it's always a pleasure to be on the show. And like I said, we have a lot to talk about. You know, you're saying I'm blowing up with the viral videos, but this is the first thing I guess I want to talk about is, is you had been on some Blaze shows, right? And you know, you've come to Dallas. I know you've been on multiple shows. I'm saying that Paramount Studios, for me, Chrissy, the reason why I think that's so cool-
Yes, you went. They had you on after your, I don't know if this was your first viral video, but you seem to be using city council meetings as your sort of open mic, which I respect and appreciate. And it's fucking hilarious, man. You had a viral video about you going to the Dallas City Council. You were, was this your first viral video? This was early last month. This was in January. You kind of punked the Dallas City Council. You were doing a pro-vax rap.
TikTok nurse impersonation rap. And you know, it went viral. It got, you know, millions of views and everybody, you know, remixes. It was like, you know, from that movie or from that show on Netflix with Kimmy Schmidt. It was kind of like that. Or they, you know, they remix it. So I kind of felt cool for a minute. But like all the big media people that reached out, like Vice and BuzzFeed, when they realized that I was, you know, trolling, they didn't want to platform me. They all said, the worst thing they could find on me is that I had a tweet that said, "Me Chinese, me play joke, me put COVID in your Coke." Like that was, that's the worst thing they could find. Cause I have a thing on, I have a thing on my Twitter that deletes all tweets older than two years, you know? So they don't have any, yeah, yeah, yeah. Cause I did his background checking. I didn't have any that bad one time for this TV show and they found me saying just some stupid stuff. It wasn't that bad. So I deleted it.
So this clip that I'm playing right now, this was taken, this was Newsweek, was celebrating you. Who all reached out to you after this went viral, which was last month? And now you've already got another one, which is currently viral. But yeah, who reached out after this one?
This, I mean, like I said, BuzzFeed and Vice were the first two. I mean, within two seconds before it even hit, it was Vice was in my news, like, oh, we want to talk to you. And then as soon as they realized who I was, you know, that they had to, they just had to shut it down because there was this guy in Dallas who's like an open socialist-type journalist. He has a blue checkmark. And he went nuts because they, and he kept on going, all these Dallas blue checkmarks. This guy, Steven Monticelli, but all these, all these, all these, I mean, blues, I'm saying black checkmark, blue checkmarks.
Black pills, yeah.
Yeah, but blue checkmark people were sharing in Dallas. And he was like, oh, you can't uncritically share this. This guy's a conspiracy monger and all this stuff. And so it's like, you know, at the end of the day, I expect that. They're not gonna like, actually interview me because then, then WGN, they have a show, News Nation. I was supposed to go on their show and I was six in the morning and midnight, they said, oh no, you can't come on anymore. And I was so bummed because I had it set up where I was through my mixer, I could fart. I was gonna play fart. So I was gonna like act like I was all normal, but through my microphone, just start ripping farts and see live while I was on air because you can only do so much stuff and see what they said. But they, they knew, they knew I'm a troll. And so it's just, it was that, it's good. I mean, I guess it's good. The best part about it though, we're talking about the Blaze. So the reason why the Blaze thing is so cool, it's like, listen, I, you know, I like Infowars. I like all the independent media, but this is why it's special to me. You're in the East Coast. Well, I'm in Dallas. There's not a lot of film studios. And that studios where they filmed, where Glenn Beck, what he bought, is, uh, uh, used to be a Paramount Studios where they filmed like Addams Family Value, part of like JFK, a lot of different-
Yeah, Barney was there. OG Tree from Barney.
And so you watch Barney all the time, right? I mean, you're in the Barney zone. I'm in the Barney zone. I mean, the Barney was my favorite. I love you, you love me, we're a happy family.
Briefly during my brief babysitting career, but never like, I never, I don't think I hit the right age to watch it.
But you watched it, you know what it was. I don't think I watched it that religiously either, but I'm just saying, like, I knew, I was familiar with the dinosaur, whatever, the purple dinosaur. I remember seeing that and knowing what it was. Yes, yes. And so, so what I'm saying is, that's cool that Glenn Beck bought it and now it's there. It's like in my mind, obviously, you know, I would want to work there or something like that. I'm not trying to get a job, but I'm saying it's just-
They are listening.
Well, yeah, I mean, I'm good.
Both of us are available.
Yeah, exactly. That's what, I guess my point is, it would be so awesome if you got a job there too, because then you could live in Texas. I'm just saying, they got such a badass setup. I didn't realize how badass it was. That's my first time going out there. And now I'm like, it makes me, I love having my SM7B and having my setup and feeling like a real broadcaster, but it's like there, you're like, oh man, this is like a Hollywood studio in Los Kalinis, in repurposed. And it's just a cool, it's just a really cool setup, really professional and really nice. And I know that you've had been there a bunch. You have a good relationship with them. So I would just say, encourage you to, you need to get a show there ASAP. I would encourage them to give you a show even before me, but they definitely need to give you a show. Well, because you'd have me on it. I'd make you have me on it.
Within my first couple of hires if I-
I would troll you to have me on. Yes, I would bug you. I would, I would bug you. I'd make you. Oh, okay. So tell me this, and I gotta talk about this I wrote down. So you buck-broke Jim Stansel on that show, on your show.
What?
Yeah, you had him sucking on a dildo on the show.
No, I didn't have him do anything. What are you doing? You're spreading rumors, Alex. Elsa Jean is the one who put a penis-shaped water gun into his mouth. I didn't tell her to do that.
I haven't even talked to him about this yet because I haven't even, I just, I just haven't talked to him about it yet. But that in the old-fashioned business of what we call in like the show businesses, would be, we would consider that buck-breaking.
What does that even mean?
You just humiliated him without even him knowing.
No, I didn't make him do that.
I know.
Elsa's very convincing though. She's a beautiful woman. She, you could probably convince a lot of guys to do all sorts of stuff. But Elsa's friend of the show, regular friend of me, as is Stansel, both a friend of Compound and a personal friend. So I don't think either of them would have done something. They were, they wouldn't have forced somebody to do something they were uncomfortable with. It was funny though. We also got a motor bunny, which if you're ever in New York, we're making guests get on the motor bunny. And Stacy Pressman, who I think ran for New York City Mayor, as soon as she was done with her run, she got on it and-
And did she have any sort of sexual pleasure from it?
She may have relieved herself a couple-
No way. There's no way. Because Chrissy, I mean, they're pumping all the time and that doesn't even work sometimes. And you're telling me they can just sit on a machine and that? No, it's not that easy.
Some women, it's easy for them. I'm definitely not one of these women. It's hard for me. I don't know. I think I have a lot going on upstairs. I think I got a lot of anxiety to work out.
Why is that, Chris? Why is that? When I'm having sex too, I'm saying it's all mental. You know, like this is what I'm saying is when I just have the one-night-stand, I can't really appreciate it. I'm not comfortable. I don't really like that. And I'm single right now. And so that's why it's kind of hard to get that comfort. Well, it's ladies, you know, but it's saying, I don't even want to date because I don't want to get all low vibrational. My mom recently passed away. So I've been such a bum. Yeah, I've been such a-
When was that?
In October, like so about three months ago, October 25th. So not that long ago.
I'm so sorry. My mom died too, like three years ago, but it doesn't even feel like three years ago. It feels like a couple of months ago.
It's getting worse. I feel like I miss her more the times the time goes by. But what I'm saying-
Waves. It's like, it'll be constantly things for the, like, I'm just saying it, the grief never ends. Buckle up.
I don't expect it to. No, it's like, it's like a living nightmare. It really is. She died tragically. But what I'm saying is, so I'm like, not even trying to date because I'm kind of just like emotionally fragile or whatever, you know, I'm just kind of like-
You're grieving right now.
I'm grieving, but I guess, I guess what I'm saying to say, it's like, it's so hard to date these girls. And when you have that sex like that, kind of meaningless sex, it's like, kind of makes you feel bad. It's just, you don't feel as comfortable. It's not, we're really, even like, I'm into like, you know, the porn and all that stuff. I'm not like, I really hate those people. You know, every time you have sex with somebody, you're transferring some sort of energy. It's not, we're not meant to just-
I believe that more the older I get, that it's like, it's more important and more special than I ever thought it was. It really is like, I hate to say like a vibrational transfer, but there's like an energy. There's, there's been studies, like I don't have them right now at my fingertips, but like supposedly like you have, you retain something of every, like women retain some aspect of every guy they've been with. Like, I don't know if it's like a seed thing or what. I don't know if that's just people who have, you know, let things lose. I'm trying not to be as dirty as possible, but like people who have relieved themselves inside of you.
They describe it as like putting your USB drive into a computer and downloading all of its programs every time you, every time you sleep with a person.
I got a lot of programs up in here.
I mean, me too. I mean, but I guess, listen.
But you're not ready. You're not ready to date yet, seriously.
I'm in dating right now and it's so terrible, these apps. Like I even went on the app again. Like I was off it for two years and I was like, let me, I was just kind of emotionally fragile for like about a month. Cause like, I just kind of, maybe I'll go on a date, maybe meet some girls and just the girls there were just, I mean, it's just-
This is in Texas? You have slim pickings? I would have thought you-
No, there's lots of girls. It's not that. I'm just saying, it's just so sterile. No, I think there's lots of girls, lots of opportunity. But see, everybody's just either so materialistic or they're like spun out on like they're alcoholic drug addicts and that, which is fine. I mean, you know, I'm just saying, I don't know how to explain it, but it's just, it's either people like trying to bang or people trying to look for a relationship. So it's just, it's very sterile. It's just, it's terrible. I don't like that. I don't like the way dating is right now. So I feel like an incel. I feel like I'm incel, but what I'm do-
You're not giving me incel vibes at all, Alex. I think if you can withstand, like, I don't know what you're, I think if you can withstand, like, not being someone who is one-night-stands all the time, like if you're okay holding that back, I think you'd have a lot to gain. Cause you, to me, are a catch. You're smart, you're funny, you're pursuing your dreams, you're, you're cute, you're well-dressed, you're all of the things, Alex. So-
Not that well-dressed.
If you can just like, focus on the qualities you really want to find in your next person rather than just taking what comes to you, you know what I mean? I think a lot of people get into the habit of, they meet someone, they have chemistry, they're off to the races. It's like, you need to have that evaluation period. Like, okay, does this person I have strong chemistry with also have these things I want in a partner or like a fricking, you know, a ride or die, a long-term person?
But see, this is another problem though, Chrissy. You and I have a similar thing. And obviously you and I have kind of like, like a work, like a workaholic type deal, where people say, oh, what we do is not work. Even though it is work, it is turning off a microphone and talking to it. But you want to be like me, you want to work harder than the next person. It's like, whether it's like, like you're now just trying to get into exercise. I'm sure you want to start working harder with exercise, you know?
I'm gonna be jacked by summer.
That's what I'm saying.
As, as F.
I believe they, I believe you will get in good shape. Cause I've been in good shape. But see, the thing is that exercise, it's all about your diet because you can work out all day and then two scoops of peanut butter and it's all, it doesn't matter. So it's really, you have to be very careful. But listen, you know that. I mean, what I'm trying to say is you and I are like work very hard. So it's hard to date sometimes. Cause like even in the last two years, I have my channel, I'll be, like, I don't know if you know this, I worked for the TV show Cheaters for over 10 years. And that show, I signed in India. We catch people cheating on their husbands and wives. They would call us and we'd like go confront them.
How have I never heard of this?
Are you kidding? It's like one of the biggest pop culture TV shows of all time. It's been on literally for nearly 20 seasons. I think we've talked about this before, but regardless. So I worked for that show, you know, you know, being like, you know, you know, liaison to the people that are on the show, you know, getting like the releases, talking to them, you know, making sure that we got the releases from the places we shot at. You know, I ended up becoming a, I started off as like a production assistant cleaning trash cans and ended up being one of the top producers on the show. Associate producer is what they call it. So what I'm saying is, worked on the show for years. The host of the show was a good friend of mine. His name's Clark Gable. His grandfather was a guy, Clark Gable, from the show Gone With The Wind.
Wow.
My buddy was a wild animal, Chrissy. I thought he would freaking kill. Like I thought he'd live forever or die in a blaze of glory. He bought Vicodin that were actually Fentanyl was in them supposedly. And I mean, this is what happened. Took him and wasn't partying or anything, wasn't drinking, was just so much. He overdosed, went to sleep and never woke up.
Damn.
And so, so that was really sad. The guy that owned the show is this guy Bobby Goldstein. He's like, Alex, we're gonna make you the host of the show. And I was like all excited, you know?
Right here?
Yes. And that guy became the show. So Peter, and he's from New York and they flew him down to Dallas. See, this is the-
He looks like, he looks Latinx to me.
Yeah, he is like Latinx. He's actually a pretty nice guy. I really don't have any beef with him.
We weren't Latin enough.
Exactly. And so they still want him to-
Bobby Kelly is on this? Wow.
Yeah, they like hired him to do like some YouTube show for him, but they did that after I left and you know, I guess in like 2021 or 2020. I guess right when I started my show, so like 2019, right before the, right when the pandemic started. But you gotta go, some of the, like the hosts got stabbed on the show. You've never heard about that?
No, I really have not heard about cheaters.
Type in Cheaters Joey Greco stabbed right now. This is one of, this is, this is an every VH1 show. Top reality moment. Have you ever seen the top reality moment of 2005? You're gonna see this TV show host. Well, type in, type it in.
This is from many years ago. He was stabbed on a boat. I mean, I thought we were gonna talk about breaking news, Alex. No, I appreciate this. I like this, this old kitschy story. Remember that time the host of Cheaters got stabbed on a boat? Is this really him?
Mm-hmm, that's really-
Really, that's really him getting stabbed?
That's the host, yeah, Joey.
Damn. For the past 15 years, a little show called Cheaters has captivated an audience that doesn't include me, likes to get drunk while watching the CW on Saturday nights, or doesn't work and likes watching people getting caught cheating, cheating on a reality TV show at 9:00 AM. Um, da, da, da. One of the show's best moments occurred on an episode in 2003 when a woman contacted Cheaters about her boyfriend is allegedly cheating, led to Cheaters investigation, finally finding homeboy frolicking with his mistress on a boat off some random dock.
You gotta play the clip.
I don't see a clip here.
You don't see it on YouTube? Let me see, show it to you. Let me find it. Oh my gosh, Chrissy. Okay, hold on.
I wanted to talk about your clip.
Okay, we'll pull that up and then I'll pull this up. I can do a share screen. Let's see. Oh my gosh, this is so old. Okay. Yeah, but that's, that's not the, that's not the clip. Okay, hold on. Let me, let me do it.
I'm here today because we gotta vaccinate our children.
You're out of breath right away.
I know because I, no, 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 because I was late. I had to run there. I was, and sometimes I am anxious, but this, that was because I was running there so late. Vaccinate is sad.
Vaccinate is sad. Everyone I know who got vaccinated is sad.
They're the happiest people ever. It's the smartest decision anybody can make for themselves. At the party. Vaccination freak-a-lee.
What percentage of people like took you seriously versus knew that you were trolling?
I don't even know. I mean, they, I mean, they had to know I was trolling, but they probably thought I was autistic and they just wanted to be nice and gentle to me.
You're pointing to an audience that isn't there.
No, there was some people there. It's just everybody's social distance. There was people, that, that's the most epic-
Purell on your head?
Yeah, I'm spraying the Purell on my face.
Was, how much of this was improvised?
All of it. A hundred percent. And my phone, I had her, yeah, I just, this is all freestyle.
This is impressive for an improv.
Well, I wasn't improv, I am an improvisationalist, no doubt about it.
Where did you study improv?
Everywhere. Are you kidding? I was actually, I took an improv, I actually started taking improv when I was in eighth grade. I was actually like in this kid improv troupe. But listen, I take an improv everywhere, Chris. What are you talking about?
I think it's wrong.
It's good. Everybody needs to know how to improvise.
Where did you go?
I'm a master improv. I mean, I never went to like any main like studios, but like I guess I've taken, in college, you took an improv class at LSU. And then where else did I take improv class? Never at like any, uh, uh, just in college. And then when I was in a kid, but I guess in the theater classes that I took, like I took those in college, you did improv drills, you know? So I've done the improv yes and. I've never done it like, like I've never gone to like groundings or anything like that. No.
It's all overpriced. I spent thousands of dollars taking UCB classes between UCB and Magnet. Like I guess it helped me out, but it's expensive. And there's people who just, I mean, UCB went bankrupt luckily during the, during the lockdowns, but there, there were people who would be like lifers. Like they would just hope to be getting on a team and they would just spend their whole salary taking these classes. And they were never gonna get, they were never gonna get put on a team.
That's, yeah, see, that's where like people are kind of like, they're just in the club. They're like, it's almost like a fraternity or something. Yeah.
Yeah, definitely. They like being around people that are in random commercials. I had a good-
And then when they get on stage and the big time, you know, they freeze, you know, I mean, I'm just saying, that's just how it is. It's hard when they get a yes and from like Will Sasso or some new SNL guy. They're like, uh, and then they never get on the stage again. You know that happens. You've seen it. Yeah.
Yeah. So this is, you did not stop at the Dallas City Council. No, you went on to Portland City Council in your most recent-
This morning.
This morning? When did you go? When did you go to do that?
Virtually this morning I did it. So, uh-
Wow, literally this morning.
Hot off the presses.
Hot. How did you find, did you go to Portland? How did you get in?
Yeah, I went there, Chrissy. That's how I flew there and flew back. No, it's all virtual because of COVID. So you can do it all these places.
Did they get your ID or something? They don't like-
No, but click the YouTube link. Click the YouTube link. Cause watch the full link.
This is not it?
No, we'll see where it says YouTube above it. Cause that, this is, it's just three minutes. It's just like, it's just like 50 seconds longer. You might as well watch the whole clip.
Okay. All right. Let me switch over.
Give it context. If you click it, oh, does that mess it up? If you click that, my cats are crazy.
No. Okay. You have, you're a cat man.
Oh yeah. And I have a dog too. But yeah, and I have a turtle. I'm just an, I'm a vegetarian.
I have a turtle too.
Wow. Mine's name is Jay Leno. What's yours name? That's cool.
It's Frank's son's turtle, but I take care of him. All right, here we go. We are playing this. Portland is the most chill place ever. Thank you, Mayor Wheeler. This is from literally this morning.
That's all for me. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for being here today.
So serious.
Please key in item 62.
Request of Alexander Hayden Stein to address counsel regarding vaccine-
So formal.
And I just gave him McDonald's address.
Alexander, are you able to unmute?
Yes, can you see me? Yo, can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm clear. Okay. Yo, I just want to say, hey, I'm a member of Antifa and listen, I was in Texas. I had a wife. She worked at a bank-
Is that your cat next to you?
It's my dog.
For 11 years and I had two kids. And she got all-
I love the unnecessary amount of-
Became a Trump supporter. So I took the dog, I took the car and I drove straight to Los Angeles. And I'll be honest with you, like LA was terrible. It was a nightmare. And then I met some guys, we rode some trains and we went up to Portland. And I have to tell you guys, this is the best place, the cleanest methamphetamines that I've ever bought. But the problem is, is a lot of these guys, all these dope users out there, you know, they're, a lot of them aren't vaccinated. And that's the thing. They got all these needles. I don't want to catch COVID. You know what I mean? Like, I'm triple vaccinated.
The dog wants no part of this. He's like, please keep me off camera.
Like, I've been parked on this-
You see the bong? Do you notice the bong?
Nobody has said anything at all. It is so chill. Dude, I'm just, you can smoke all day in the purest Molly I've ever seen. Like you can stay up all night and it's chill in Portland. In Texas-
Hold on, at this point, you've mentioned drugs multiple times. No one has cut in. No one has chimed in.
Just listen.
And like, man, what happened at the federal building, it was like, it was sweet that y'all were so chill about it because a lot of my boys were the ones starting those fires. And like, I know some family friends that went down on January 6th to Washington DC and now they're in jail forever. Like they're gonna be in jail forever. So that's so tight that you were able to hook us up, Mayor Wheeler, and not mess us up like those loser Trump supporters there. But Portland is chill. So guys, if y'all want some clean dope, the Fentanyl is clean, the Molly is clean, the PCP, the GHB, oh my, the cleanest GHB I've ever seen. Oh, I got me my boy's face. We were chipped out for four hours, dude. We were at the McDonald's. Dude, I had six McChickens, dude. I don't even eat meat, man. It was sick. Portland is like, if you're in chill-
They're about to cut me off.
If you like to smoke and you like, like, and you like old art movies, dude, you can smoke all day, watch old movies. They'll let you take your dog in the theater. They let you take your dog in the theater. They don't do any of that crap in Texas. In Texas, they got all these rules. They got all these cops. They pull you over. Dude, Portland is so chill. So Mayor Wheeler, you're the number one chillest mayor-
This is great.
Ever, dude. So I just want to encourage everybody out there. If you've got a family member that's like on Trump's crap or something like that, go to Portland, take the train.
But overtime, so we-
And I said 15 seconds.
Oh my god.
Listen to what he says.
Spirit which it was offered, which is complete sarcasm. Next individual-
You know, he says it's, he says it's complete sarcasm, but what's funny is-
So I'll take that in the spirit which it was offered, which is complete sarcasm. Next individual, please.
How does he know?
Yeah, the thing is, what was wrong though? But you know, did you know the federal building in Portland, he let them burn it, burn it forever. And they didn't prosecute one person. And that was a federal courthouse.
You're so, I mean, okay, I'm about to give you a huge compliment. Like, you're doing comedy in, in like such a smart, unique way. And it's, you're not just thinking like, what's gonna make me go viral? Although I don't think that is your creative process. You're like, how can I reach people in an interesting way? It's almost like you go around the back door of somebody's mind and you let yourself in through the back. Like as they're throwing out the trash, you sneak in and you're like, hey, wait a minute. Have you ever thought about it this way? I think that's-
That's exactly right. Wow, Chrissy, that makes me feel so good. Cause that is, I do want a backdoor. And I don't even really want to make people laugh. Like Chrissy, like you're a stand-up comedian, like, and I consider myself, I want to be like Andy Kaufman. I just want to be like, I don't even, basically, but what I'm saying is, is I just want to make people question the reality. I don't even want to make, I'm not a role model. I don't want to be, I don't want people to be like, oh, because I'm not that smart. You know, I'm not that smart. But what I'm saying is, is, is when you ask these questions, you just kind of put a mirror to like that. Like that guy says it's satire, but really everything I said, it's true. They have an overwhelming drug problem. They have, you know, homelessness out at the Wazoo. You know, he didn't prosecute anybody that, you know, attacked their federal building, but they did. So I guess what I'm-
Yeah, he said it was sarcasm and you're saying true things.
Because he can't handle it. I guess what I'm saying is, I don't, I'm not even trying to pat myself on the back, but it's literally just putting a mirror on like the reality, the absurdness of reality. So it's like, it's not even me being some talented person. It's like literally just being a hack comedian, being a hack of what is so, and that's what that, that's what the original video that went viral. I was trying to be cringy. In my mind, I thought, oh, this would be cringy. This would be, you know, I want to be these TikTok nurses. And that's, it's, I mean, I'm not trying to say I'm a total hack, but that's what you're kind of trying to be that hacky, that impersonation. Like, did you see that skit of those two people that went viral of doing the, you know, the old Will Ferrell cheerleader skit?
Oh, yes. With the science shirt and the man basically was wearing a belly shirt. I'm like, what self-respecting man does a choreographed dance with a woman with his belly showing like that? I was like, this man absolutely either wants to get into her pants or he's gay and this is like his BFF. Either way, no respect. And it was very cringy. But I really like your style, Alex, because people don't want to be told, especially Democrats, especially people in power, not only do they not want to be told that they're wrong and that they're fucking up, but they won't even let people access them. You know what I mean? If you came in with your regular opinions, writing a letter, or if you tried to show up to one of these meetings as, as actual you, they wouldn't give you the time of day. And I'm sure you're thinking like, okay, who would they give the time of day to? Who is the type of person that is like loving all this? And, and you're playing those roles, which is like brainwashed TikTok nurse and like guy on lots of drugs wasting his life away.
Antifa.
Like moron. You're like, the only morons could enjoy what's going on right now. And you put yourself in that role and it really makes people think. It's like a really unique, unique way of doing And it really makes people think it's like a really unique, unique way of doing comedy, uh, of doing like characters, I guess. At the same time, you're doing like a real life punking situation. Like you're doing like a real, like even Practical Jokers was still, I think they're rest, they're less relevant now. Uh, than they were a few years ago. I think they really turned down their efforts at the beginning of the lockdowns. I think, I don't know, maybe, I don't know what's going on with them.
They're probably rich, right? They're probably.
They're probably rich and not hungry anymore. And they're probably like, we're good. Uh, we're gonna.
They have syndication. They're, they're fine. Yeah.
They're absolutely crushing it. But you're, it feels like you are carrying the torch, uh, in a way.
Wow. You made me feel so good today.
Like the practical Joker Joker style, but it's like from, for the times we're living in right now, and you're making people think and you're goofy as fuck. And it takes a special kind of person to put themselves in this position where you could absolutely be misunderstood. You could absolutely be trolled back, canceled back, right? People give you opportunities and then quickly take them away when they find out who you really are. Um, that is not something everyone can do.
Well, listen, uh, I just tweeted it. I was listening to this other podcast and this girl said something. She's like, you know, uh, a coward dies many times before their death. And so I'm not saying that, you know, I'm not, I'm some uncowardous person, but I guess it's, it's to be unapologetically yourself, I guess, is to not be a coward. And I think more people should try to be unapologetically, uh, yourself. And like, that's what I think about too, is you know, uh, you know, like I said, how my mom recently died. That's why I've even turned it up more is like, I've been kind of ridiculed by being anti, you know, COVID and stuff. My mom dies, people trash me on the internet. And so that's, I have to take that. So nothing will be worse than that now, Chrissy. So what I'm saying is now, and now I can, they, they've, they've cut me as deep as they can cut me without killing me. So now nothing, I mean, without, I mean, I guess from the day my dad dies, it'll be another painful day.
Other people like cut you as far as your mom's death? What do you, what do you mean by that? Like you're.
Oh, people are like, oh, you've made fun of COVID and your mom died. My mom got COVID and went to the hospital and was given remdesivir and died seven days later. And we told him not to give her remdesivir.
Oh, man. How old was she?
She was sixty years old. She was just.
So young. I'm so sorry.
She was overweight and smoked like a chimney though. But uh, yeah, she wasn't in the best cell. But what I'm saying is, uh, just people trolled me about that, which is fine, which is, I, I had to take that on the chin. I had to take that. So what I guess what I'm saying is now I'm like this like scorned man, like from the guy, you know, from falling down. What's his name? Uh, um.
You're like a lone wolf. You're a gunslinger. You're, nobody can hurt you anymore. You're.
Hey, but, but let me tell you the saddest thing. Let me tell you the saddest thing. I don't even think I said this on my show and I actually filmed it. I don't even want to post it. Guys like this side of things. So. I was so, such in a good mood after Sarah Gonzalez's show at Blaze TV and Irving, like, you know, I'm driving back to my house and.
When did you do that? That was, um.
The Friday. Yeah, I think it was two weeks ago or now it's like three weeks ago. It was the week that it went viral. So like three weeks ago, that Friday.
Snapped you up right away. They're great with that.
Well, she just liked it. Yeah. And she invited me right on her show. She was so nice. And then Elijah and Sydney had me on because you know, they saw, they liked the video too. And people in the chat were like, you should have mine. Cause they were asking for guests. So it was kind of kismet how it worked out. But what I'm saying is, let me tell you the sad story. It's so sad. So I go, I go to my, one of my favorite places, even on the plan based pimp, I don't eat meat. So I go to the Chinese super buffet. It's called the King buffet and it's really good. You know, it's like fifteen bucks.
Happy ending?
No, it's a food place. They don't jack you off at the buffet line. I, that'd be kind of cool if they did, but they don't. I, well, that, that one closed. They had a food, a lot of food health code violations. But what I'm saying is, listen to this. I was so happy. I was eating my food and I was like, oh, I got to go on this video. And I was looking at it. It was like, oh, the first person that shared it had 3.5 million views. And I sat there, I started crying thinking of my mom, my biggest fan would not be able to see it.
Alex, we are so similar. I felt so similarly after my mom died. It's like the biggest grief that life can hand you and nothing prepares you for the death of a parent. Like I was way closer with my mom. I even made jokes about it. Like, man, the wrong parent died first. I made every kind of joke. My mom got brain cancer, which is like one of the shittiest ways to watch somebody die because it was a brain tumor. And it was right on her focal motor, part of her brain. So I watched her speech dissipate, her, her motor functions. I learned, I've watched her like stop being able to walk.
Over how, over how long of a time? My mom died in my arms too. And the.
Good for you for being there at her time of death. I still beat myself up over not being there when she died. I saw her last beginning of July and she died, uh, beginning of August. So.
You just didn't want to hang out in the room.
Well, she was in Florida. She's in Florida. I'm in New York.
Okay. Then she's a different state.
My parents had to move to Florida full time after she was diagnosed. She was diagnosed in 2015. She died August of 2018. So she missed all this COVID stuff.
It was good for her.
In a way, it was good. Cause had she, had there been an overlap, like, yeah, it probably would have taken her out. Cause uh.
Boy, I wish, wish she wouldn't have died never. But I mean, the thing is losing the mom, I mean, it's, it's, it's the most incredible pain that I've ever felt. It's like, I don't even wish it on my mortal enemies. Yeah.
It's bad. And it's a, it starts to lighten up after about a year. Like you go through your first, you know, everything, like everyone's birthday, Mother's Day, you know? And after you do a year of that, then it starts to lessen. But like, you know, it hits you at random times. Like you'll be walking behind somebody who kind of looks like her and you'll start crying. I don't know. I don't know if you're gonna handle it like me. Sorry to bum it out.
No, I know. It's cold. We get low vibrational. I try not to even talk about it too much. But Chrissy, we're trauma bonding right now because we're both emotional about it.
This is the point I wanted to make. When she died, it opened up so much space in my spirit, in my heart and mind. And, and like this, there was this huge opening and what flowed in was like everything I wasn't giving myself, which was, I wasn't really like pursuing my career much. I felt like I had to emotionally take care of a lot of people in my family. And when she died, it was like this clearing, this creation of space. And then what flowed in was like, I just got to work. I worked my ass off with comedy and things started clicking and happening. So.
Chrissy, it's funny you say that because that's the only thing that's brought me any joy is, is when I'm distracted from it and I'm doing something, when I'm signing up to go to this meeting or like I'm thinking, or I gotta edit or something's rendering. When I'm doing that stuff, then I'm not thinking about my mom. So it's weird how you, it's maybe, even though I was trying to grind before, like my mom's my biggest fan before, why she's still alive. But it's like, now I want to grind even harder because it's a distraction. It gets me away from that. It's like the only thing that, that helps the pain.
Don't like, you know, I mean, like it's, it's a natural response to want to ignore it and be like, I'm going to busy myself. So I don't feel all this, but um, she's always going to be with you. She's always going to be as proud of you and constantly looking out for you. And it's like, just because someone's not there in like a physical form doesn't mean like I, you know, it depends how, what you believe in, but I believe it's like, they're always there, always looking out. They're always like, when you're in line with your purpose and God and all of that stuff. Like I feel like the people that have passed on are also working to help things click and connect for us and like show us our path in life, you know?
Well, let me tell you this, the people, this is kind of sick though. I always kind of worry about my mom and I were really close. We were best friends. And I do think she's still there. And sometimes I think, I wonder if she'll ever miss me and bring me there early.
Oh, no.
Yes. I, I worry about that. I think about.
That would be incredible.
I know. I know. But I think about that. I'm like, gosh, I wonder, or maybe she's mad at me because of the way it would happen. I think about that sometimes. Like, I don't know. I, it's weird. I never would have, I never would have thought that I'd have that thought. I'm like, maybe she's mad at me because all of a sudden now I have heart pain all the time and I'm like so stressed out. Like I've never had bad health and now I feel like my health is bad. Maybe because I'm just so messed up.
Avoiding grief. It's probably because you're avoiding the grieving process.
Yeah. I feel terrible. But what I'm saying is, I don't think my mom really will come from the afterlife for me. But sometimes I'm just like, gosh, I just, I know she's there and I just wonder how she really feels.
I think she wants you to go for your dreams and I think she's watching you do it now and is thrilled and is going to help you however she can. Yeah.
Yeah. Well, I know she loves me, but it's just.
Be like the next Long Island medium. Cause I am from Long Island and that.
She's the biggest scam artist. And see, that's another reason. That's another reason why these mediums are terrible. And that's why they can't get me and I lost a parent. That's what those mediums do.
You know, yeah, they do. They are.
Well, they pray. They know, but they prey on people that lost a loved one. That's, that's.
Yeah. My sister fought her daughter out in Hicksville, uh, high school. She was a teacher out there. It's just funny. Long Island is like, there's a special breed of people from there.
Howard Stern. Everybody's from Long Island. Yes.
Yeah.
He's from Roosevelt.
But this is all going to, this is all like, I'm sure you know, toughening you up. It's making you the person you're meant to be. And look at, look at just what's happened in the last couple of months. Like literally this morning, you had a viral video and last month, and you've, you were whisked off to the blaze. You know what I mean? Things.
No, my mom's helping me out. I know, I know. But guys, Chris, it's, it's like, oh, it's just, I would so much rather have her here and be a nobody, zero broadcasting to, I mean, you know, like instead of, like right now, we're live on my channel. We have almost like 300 people total. And I'm just saying, that's just good for me. I'm, this is more than I used to have a year ago this time, you know, triple what I used to have. But like, I would trade all that back, all that, this minus success I've had in the future success that I'm going to have, that I know I'm going to have, that I know I'm going to have, Chrissy. I know I'm going to be somewhat successful. I mean, I'm not going to, you know, I know that I'm going to have some success and it's still good. I would still trade it all back and be a nobody. And I'm not saying this to virtue signal, to go back and be with my mom.
Well, you can't do that. You have to settle for being successful.
I know. So now I have to grind even harder. But see, and that's another thing is I talk about, it's hard to date. You know this. Luckily you have a very supportive partner. Frank is an awesome guy. I think he's one of the best guys, you know? And so that's, it's not easy. It's a lot, not a lot of girls want to support.
Positioning us for a threesome. It wouldn't be the first time.
No, 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 I'm not that perverted. What I'm saying is, even though you are very beautiful, you know, uh, I, I, it's not that. I just, I couldn't perform if somebody's watching. But listen, this is what I'm saying. It's hard to find a partner, you know, that likes you, the broadcasting, because it takes a lot of time to do this. Like, I mean, really, it's a full-time job. I mean, Chrissy, you do, you grind more than forty hours a week. You're eighty hours a week, probably. You know what it comes down to, you think?
Really tally it up, but um, yeah, I, I'm just trying to like do the whole, if, if you build it, they'll come situation. I don't, I don't know. There's no, just like you know, there's no path for this. There's no. Set of steps that will lead you towards success and making a living. But.
What's the deal with all the Frost stuff? Tell me that. Cause I don't even know the gamer gay. I know, I don't even game.
I'm not a gamer either. I had like no clue of this woman or G four before, like a, a month or two ago. And I just like, I, I see a woman in, in, in the, uh, the spotlight, having a meltdown and I feel called. Like, I'm just like, oh, I'm, I'm entranced by these women. Like anyone having a public meltdown, whether it's Greta Thunberg or Jen Socky, or now this Frost chick. It's like, oh, I just feel compelled to like, put myself in their shoes and see what the redeeming qualities and doesn't necessarily have to be like a liberal or um, a woke person. But it seems to work out that way more often than not. I just think it's fun to do impressions. And I think, uh, you don't want to do it just a mean impression. You have to put yourself in their shoes and, and try to think like them. And just like what you did with going to the city council, you're like, oh, what would a guy in Portland who's wasting his life doing drugs? What would he, what would his values be? Like, what would he appreciate? And the same thing with like the, the brainwashed nurse singing about the vax. It's like, you get it. It's um, it's, it's a fun way to reach people. And I think there's a, there's standup. That's one way of, of comedy. And I think with impressions, which I would consider like you're doing impressions, you're like real life, like, you know.
I call performance art. Yeah.
You should have a tip jar out. But you are getting people to think differently about the subject matter in a way that's not telling them directly. It's like, you're just making fun with it. You're like a cat batting around a mouse. I don't know. Um, I think it's cool.
Tell me about though, the, but it's Frost. Gosh, and I really appreciate that. But she doesn't like misogyny, but is misogyny the problem? Because, and I'm not saying that it doesn't exist. I believe in comedy. I bet you have to deal with it all the time. So I think, you know, that's why I'm saying, I bet you kind of do side with her a little bit, which I'm sure there is some sort of misogyny. Is, is what I'm saying, but isn't that just kind of like, you know, par for the course, I guess? I mean, or is that?
Any woman that, that knowingly walks into a mostly male arena should know what comes with that, which is going to be like comments on your looks, people saying if you're, if they find you sexually attractive or not, because like we're human beings, like a lot of guys, like that's just. And a lot of women too, like their initial assessment is like, oh, would I bang this guy or not? Whereas men speak more freely about that than women, unless you get them.
But women and men, but they did a study, women and men know like within 10 seconds if they would have sex with a person after a meeting. I mean, now they know that instantly. So.
So I don't know. It's a, men have a biological imperative to spread their seeds. So they're going to be a little bit more, uh, like outspoken, a little bit more, um, extroverted with it. And women stereotypically are the choosers, like are the ones that are like, oh, here are my options and then I pick what I want. And so I think Frost is either has too thin of a skin or is insecure about her comparing herself to previous hosts, or maybe there's a little bit of like, I don't know, self hatred there. I don't know. I don't know enough about her personally, but it seems that she's unable to recognize like the, the sphere that she's in. And it's like, you're, you're asking a, a whole world to change who they are at their core. You're at, or you're like, there's maybe 20% of fans that are sexist and rude to you, and you're putting that onto a hundred percent of the fans. And it, and it makes the, the 80% go, well, shit, I wasn't thinking of you in that way. And that's kind of unfair for you to stereotype all of us this way. And it brings attention. I think it just brings attention to her insecurities.
And, and, and she's probably not wrong. You're right. It's like the twenty, the, the, the bad apples spoiled a bunch. Is there, she probably does get it a little bit, but she's also milking it too. You know what I mean? Like you can tell. She's got all the tats and her looks. She's an attention nut. I mean, I'm an attention nut. So you know, and you play her like that character, you know how to play that. She is the drama queen kid. You know, the improv kid. That's what she is. So she's just taking, she's just taking advantage that she can do gamergate too, I guess. And I don't even game, but that's just my analysis from it.
Yeah. She's gotten a ton of new followers. Um, and then she deleted a lot, like almost all of her tweets.
She uses an app like I use. That's, I told you, you can download an app. It's like a third party app and it'll delete all your old tweets. That's how she deleted forty five thousand.
Are you afraid of someone digging up an old tweet and?
I just did, I did, I did for a long time for this reality show a while ago. I did, I did this like years ago. Cause yeah, they went back and they saw that, you know, I didn't have anything that bad, but you know, they look at all your old tweets and some of them were like so stupid. They were just like, like racist without being racist. You know, they're just, just cringy bad jokes, you know?
I were like, that's you like, and not like, I don't mind sending out a racial joke. Cause I think if it's funny, it's funny. You can say whatever you want. But like some of my tweets were like racial without being funny, like the punch like wasn't there and it wasn't like the juice wasn't worth the squeeze. So I'm like, okay, I deleted like maybe 10. Because they just like weren't funny, not because I was, um, not proud of them or worried about getting canceled. I just was like, yes, these are, these are first drafts that don't need to be here.
You just embarrass them. Yeah. You don't need them anymore. They don't need to exist. And that's why it's like, I, I, I think about that. Oh, well, on the internet, like people can do a wayback machine and find even tweets that like get deleted or something, you know, now, I, I don't know if maybe they can find my, like I said, I didn't even have that bad of old tweets to delete. I just did it because like everybody, everybody's just cancel culture. And I'm not, and this is when I was just still kind of bought into cancel culture. Now I could definitely be canceled. Now it's like, they look into me, they're going to be like, oh, well, he's had people that were January sixth. Yeah. Not, not saying you, but you know what I mean? Like that, I'm just saying they're construed, yeah, construed anybody as, you know, bad. Like I know people that have lost their PayPal, lost all kinds of stuff over nothing, you know, over and over. So it's just, it's very easily, uh, to be misconstrued.
Do you worry about that? Do you worry about?
I know I'm probably going to get canceled one day.
The more like, what do you, what's like your biggest fear?
Well, I mean, I guess right now, cause I'm building my YouTube, but I'm sure they're going to delete that one day. I mean, I'm sure, and that's why. Well, yo, I've had so many strikes, but I've had like 90 days go by where they've, you know, been, you know, they've gone down. Yeah.
You're watching it.
I watch it tight. Oh, I try to watch it very tight. That's why I say the vaccine is safe and effective. Get your booster. It's the best decision. Dr. Fauci is the greatest human being on planet earth. We love Tony Fauci.
Not taking advantage of anybody, definitely not trying to stay famous as long as possible.
What he did to those beagles too, in the name of science was terrific. They deserve to be, uh, have the, have be tested like that on. Everybody should be tested on.
It hurts my heart. Dogs, dogs are special. Like, but you know what karma is going to get him for that. I mean, for all of it. So.
And I definitely believe in karma, but like the thing is, I don't even think karma, I mean, it's like, how does it even get him? Like his life probably sucks already. You know what I mean? Like karma is probably already gotten like, you give him the impression like his life is good, but he's been there since the AIDS epidemic, since AZT. He, he's probably like, he probably goes to sleep at night sick to his stomach, you know? You know, so his life is probably not, like now he's getting some clout because people are so stupid. You're like, oh, we like, you know, but other than those idiots like that, he probably gets, he probably looks at all the hate comments more. And so I bet you, bet you it's not all roses and lollipops and candy canes.
People that I, that tend to idolize someone like Fauci or Biden or just like any, any politician. It's like, those are people who lack God or, or lack, uh, like meaningful relationships, meaningful mentors in their life. Like everybody's looking for a religion, but whether it takes the form of an actual religion or like worshiping a science or politicians, it's like, you're going to look to somebody for answers. Most people do.
Well, science has replaced God to these people. And that's another thing though, Chrissy, is they, that's like one of the biggest psychological operations that they have us under is at a very early age, they want to make you think that we all came from the big bang and that we're just some cosmic accident, you know, that just came from nothing. And that's like the atheistic mindset of, you know, our reality, but like, oh, we got to donate $20 donation. Wow. I, I like, yeah, on my, on my stream.
Oh, oh, excuse me.
Well, I just want to say Shae Shae TK, one of my favorites. Sorry to interrupt like that. But what I'm saying is, I'm saying something kind of deep and then I talk about a donation, but Shae Shae is one of my biggest fans. I love her. What I'm saying is they want to keep you under that like atheistic mindset on purpose, because you're easy to control because you're under fight or flight. But at the end of the day, you had to have had like 9,000 grandparents, Chrissy, had to have sex at exactly the right time for you to be here. So just think about all the machinations and dominoes.
All right now. I think none of, I'm betting none of them swallowed either. Like I'm just, I don't think.
None of the older ones did. No, they didn't. No.
Even in her prime. Even in her prime was into that. She got married.
And you're from Ireland, probably. You probably go back from the Gaelic. Yes, you have to, you're right.
I'm 0% Irish. This is, I'm a blonde naturally. I'm like Norwegian and German.
Okay, well, you're Norwegian and German. It's all the same anyway. It's, well, listen, I don't even care where you're from, but your grandparents probably didn't swallow, is what I'm trying to say.
None of ours did. None of us did. Um, are you planning to troll city and town hall meetings with Elijah? With the likes of like, an Elijah or a Brittany Venti, or any other of your crew?
Elijah and, Elijah and I, he's supposed to go with me. I believe it's next week. You know, he says some bit, he hasn't told me his bit yet, but yeah, next week.
He's a funny guy, and I think he just needs the right outlet. And I think a collab between you two would be great.
Yeah, he's the man. He, like I said, he had me on his show, so I can't tell you how appreciative. And he, before the show, he's like, hey, I want to go down there. So, but he just hasn't told me his idea, so I probably need to reach out to him, you know, like, this weekend and figure it out. But I'm actually um, uh, doing a show with uh, um, with Bradley, the guy who runs his show uh, this weekend. He has a, a conspiracy show, so uh.
Bradley?
Yeah, the guy that runs his board.
Brandon?
Brandon. Why I said Bradley, why I said Brandon, it's Brandon. Now, I hope he didn't see that. Got Brandon, sorry, excuse me. Uh, I don't know why I said Bradley. Um, I think I've hit the reefer a little too many times, but yes, with Brandon, because it's Brandon Steele is his name. Uh, um, uh, I'm doing a show with Brandon. So yes, I'll probably try to have some sort of idea, maybe I'll pitch him too. But I've been creating content with this guy Cassidy Campbell. I, I think, think he might be mad at me, though. He didn't answer my phone call today. He's got 1.5 million subs, and he does like, pranks, Chrissy. You'll like this. And I'm saying, I like doing his content, going out, and we'd like, did a prank where I like, dropped a hundred bucks, and he picked it up in front of people. And like, we would like yell at each other and stuff. And it's so, it seems like, you know, immature or whatever, but it's hilarious. I like. But I guess what I'm saying is, I get pleasure out of going to these meetings and punking people. I like having interactions with people, and them not knowing, is that, was that real? Or was that fake? Like, that is like, so funny to me. I guess that shows that I'm sick of my head.
No, it's, it's, it's good. It's, it's not, everybody has that skill, or, and there is a degree of vulnerability that you have to risk. It's like, it's definitely, I would definitely call it hashtag brave, you know? Like, you, you're really putting yourself out there to look foolish in a, like, you're putting yourself out to like, look insane.
Well, I know I am insane now, so.
Whereas like, if I just do a character, it's online, it's on the internet, people could see it or not. But like, you go into it, like, a live room of people and do it. It's, it's really, yeah, it's like a little one-man show.
It is.
That you're posing on poor city council meetings.
What do I do with Brittany Venti? Because she said she's down to do some, she wants to do some man-on-the-street stuff, but she, you know, she'll film with me. I told her I'll edit it and film it all.
Porn, um, but she's probably down for whatever, because she's fun. I think she likes to like, sort of prank people as well.
She definitely wants to troll some people too. So I, I mean, I need to figure out a way to use her, uh, because I like Brittany. I really like her attitude. Um, she's cool, so. And she's in the Metroplex. It's funny, like I said earlier, we're talking about Blaze, and now I call the Brandon Bradley. So now we're really never gonna work at the Blaze. But if you moved to Texas, you would love it, Chrissy. You would.
I would be, I would.
You would be, and, and you visited Irving. I mean, Irving is like, you need to watch this movie. It's called, uh, I think it's called True American, I believe. Um, and it's, it's kind of like about Texas. And it's, it's a, it's a, the guy, David Byrne, the guy from um, what is it? The guy from uh, uh, The Talking Heads, he did this movie, and it's kind of, type, okay, let me type it, David Byrne movie, David Byrne movie. And uh, uh, what is it called? David Byrne movie about Texas. Sorry, I don't know why, I don't know why. I've watched this movie a bunch. True Stories, it's called True Stories. It's a movie in, in 1986. You need to watch it. But it's like, this kind of tell you like, is Dallas in like, the 80s and 90s was meant to be like, a really hip place, you know? They just, this is like, what they call the Silicon Prairie. So now, I guess what I'm saying, the psychological conspiracy minded, is they've always been trying to push Dallas, for whatever reason, as like, this like, big, you know, city, I guess. And so this movie kind of talks about it, like, you know, there's, you can afford to live here. It's like, safe. There's just a lot of, it's kind of a sterile place. It's not like New York. It's not culturally diverse and, you know, melting pot. It's like the exact opposite. It's like, all these suburbs and places. And this movie kind of gives you a, like, a, an eyeball of it. But because of the lifestyle that, because there's a 7-Eleven and CVS on every corner, because there's a Chinese restaurant in two seconds, your life's easy. It is easier. It's like, this movie kind of gives you, you kind of have that fat American lifestyle. But who doesn't want that? Who doesn't want, I mean, you can make fun of Olive Garden all day long. The unlimited breadsticks are still delicious. I don't care what you say. The unlimited breadsticks are still delicious.
Yeah, unlimited anything sounds good.
No doubt about it. Okay, and I gotta, we gotta talk about this, we gotta talk about the last thing, though. I don't know, you know, how long we're going for, but. Uh, so what is, what is the latest with the Compound Media beef with Kevin Brennan? You know, I've been lucky enough to kind of befriend Kevin Brennan, and you guys have this rivalry.
You've befriended him?
I've been friends, I've been on Kevin's show twice. I'm kind of friends with Kevin.
That means friends?
I mean, no, I'm not, but I like Kevin.
At night when you're falling asleep?
No, okay, listen, I don't ever text Kevin. I do have a show number, but listen, and you don't have my number, but listen, he makes fun of you, but now he's at Compound. So now.
He is?
Well, he's not. I guess he's not. Okay, you're, you're mad at me for bringing up Kevin. I'm not, I like, no, I'm just bringing it up because I like the rivalry. Now I'm getting all stressed out. I'm getting all flustered. I know my heart's beating. Listen, I'm just saying.
Interview over. Um, no, I think, I know he guests on Kumia's show here and there, but I don't think there's any plans at all to bring him back to the network.
So let's troll him. So Kevin, he's not gonna watch this, but you're not coming back to, uh, to Compound. That's, that's the latest.
I think he just enjoys.
Oh, so he's trolling the audience by kind of insinuating that he's going back? Is that what?
I don't really know. I don't, I stopped trying to understand him when he started just like, lashing out at me for no reason.
Yeah, but you don't see how desperate that is? You don't see how that's all out of jealousy, that he's 100% purely just jealous that, that, you know? He doesn't have anything to say other than, oh.
We could not be more dissimilar. Like, how, to be jealous.
Because he's a chauvinistic male comic that doesn't like, you know, a girl having success on Kumia's network. He doesn't, you know, he's just a fucking hard-on. I don't know. Yeah, that's his personality.
When I was pitching the show, I remember calling him up, texting him, like, I was asking for him advice about the process, like.
The more successful you get, the less he's gonna like you. His own brother is a plot, I mean, and I don't think Neil's a very good guy. Actually worked on a commercial with him. His brother is kind of a douche on the commercial. But I'm saying, could you imagine you have a younger brother who's like, best friends with all these top comedians, much more successful than you? So I guess what I'm saying is, and, and Kevin has this kind of like, Al Bundy, I scored four touchdowns in my high school football game. You know, he's kind of stuck in the past. So like, that's why the more successful you're gonna get, the more he's gonna hate you. But that should be, you should take it as a term of endearment, because if, it's like, with the football coach that picks on you, he doesn't pick on the bad players. They pick on the good players. It's not worth their time to go pick on the guy that's never gonna play in the game. They pick on the people that are like, you know, worth it, you know? And so that's what you don't realize.
If he sees himself in the coach position, instead of us just being equals that could work with each other in the future, like, he's kind of screwed himself. Because it's like, now if I, if I have an opportunity.
But he's 100 years old, Chrissy, he's been.
Think of him, you know what I mean? Like, so he's kind of just shooting himself in the foot, but I guess.
Chrissy, Chrissy, he's, he's 100 years old. You're half his age. He was doing Star Search.
Are you calling me 50?
Well, you know, I'm not that, I'm not, I guess I didn't mean to be like that. I'm saying, he, he was, did, lost to Star Search to Dave Chappelle. So I'm not, I'm just saying, he was on Saturday Night Live 100 years ago. He's had some success. I don't think you should look at him like a total dolt. He, I think he's, I think he's definitely touched success.
Called him unsuccessful. I've never called him untalented. I just don't uh, see why we need to, like, what, what he's needed to make me an enemy, even if it's for fun. It's like, it still doesn't like, leave me with a good impression of like, wanting to ever work with him, you know?
But you gotta be the bigger man, Chrissy. That shows you. Let me tell you a story. Let me tell you this story, just real quick. I don't know if I told you this story. So I was on this Food Network show, it was called, Worst Cooks in America. And it's with Bobby Flay. It's, it's about a cooking show. They get bad cooks on the show, and they kick you off every week, like, you know? And, and they, they turn bad cooks into good cooks. So, listen to this, listen to this story real quick. This is just a Bobby Flay. You gotta be like Bobby Flay. I, uh, once I got kicked off the show a little too early, I was mad. I got interviewed by this Times picking you, New Orleans, the, the newspaper. And I said a mean comment. I was like, oh, I don't like Bobby Flay, you know, he's a chauvinist. He's like, you know, egomaniac, like, you know, he picked a girl over me, and I just didn't like him. And this is like, before the show came up. So then I get a cease and desist from Bobby Flay and Food Network saying, don't talk about the show, you know, you're gonna reveal it, this and that. So I'm like, all scared. Fast forward, the show comes out about a year later. My dad calls me at North Park Mall. He's like, get your ass to North Park Mall. It's like, this really nice mall in Dallas. And, and in the, there's a huge line, and it's like, come here. Inside, it's Bobby Flay doing an autograph signing. And I'm scared to death, because I gotta go in there, and I think he's gonna clown me in front of my dad, because my dad wants to meet him. And I walked in, and Bobby Flay couldn't have been any nicer, even after I said all that dirtbag stuff. And it made me, Chrissy, feel like I was this, it was, it was so, it was so much of a more way, better way to diffuse me. Then if he would have said, oh, fuck you, then I would have been right. Then I would have said, oh, he's an egomaniac. But because he diffused me that way, because he was so nice, took a picture with me, acted like, you know, I'm just saying, he killed with kindness. In that example, I would just encourage you to do that, because you can, because you're, you're on, you're the rising star. So you gotta, you just, you're the on the way up. You gotta be nice on the way up. Everybody can be mean on the way down. That's just how it works.
I'm always nice.
Yeah. And you have been nice. I don't think you've never, you've never said one thing about Kevin. He's been unfairly mean to you. But at the same time, it's just, don't take it.
To talk about him. There's so many other things I'd rather talk about. Like, I never think of him, and he literally is.
Thinks about you all the time. Okay, no more Kevin Brennan talk. If, for F, F Kevin Brennan. I hate Kevin Brennan now.
He's fine. I, I just feel, I just feel very neutral, like, you know, very neutral.
I just, I, I mean, you know, listen, Chrissy, I don't, I'm, I, I obviously am being, you know, neutral in this situation, because listen, I think Kevin is a funny guy. And I love, I love his shtick, that he's kind of this self-hating guy. Like, for me, I, as a guy, as a comedian, I don't. Chrissy, what comedians are even good right now, in your opinion? What comedian is, is stand-up is really good in your mind?
Adam Carolla.
I mean, there's a few.
Big Stan Hope.
Yeah, of course. There's like, Nate Bargazzi, Nick, dude, there's some guys that are like, there's some guys, but I'm just saying, really and truly, like, the best comics, they say, like, even Dave Chappelle or these guys. They're really, it's not that good. There's just not, I guess, what I'm saying is like, it's hard to find people that you like, content that you like. That's why people like you. That's why I kind of like him, that he's a, he's, you know, he's weird. He's like, yeah, he's unique. That's why I like him, that he's not Dave Chappelle. That he's like, so I just, I don't know how to say, is I'm a fan of both of yours.
You're a fan, yeah.
I'm a fan. Yes, I'm a fan. That is what it comes down to.
K-Max for Alex, what can Chrissy do for fun in Dallas? Are there some sites you would take her to? Best city in Texas?
Well, Chrissy's been to Dallas. She knows. I mean, have you been to the JFK? So, did you go to that? Did you go to Dealey Plaza? That's the first place I'd take you. We'd have to.
I have, I have driven past it, but I haven't like, walked around there. I haven't done like, what I want to do, which is a full reenactment. Like, I want to pretend that I'm getting shot in the face, you know, like, right where JFK was.
There's an X. We could film it. But the thing is, you need a car, we need a convertible to really make it look right.
I know, convertible.
I could figure that out. If next time you're in town.
The fact that JFK was assassinated there. They have a whole museum. They have all, you can walk right up to where the guy stood in the room, and like, look out the window. Like, they like it a little too much.
It's a six-floor museum. I know, but what are you gonna do? We don't have that much stuff to, you know, show. And we're on the 33rd degree parallel supposedly, so they say it was, you know, some sort of like, you know, occultic Illuminati hit, is why they killed JFK. And then if you, if you look at the picture of LBJ after, um, uh, once he's getting sworn in, he's literally smiling as he's getting sworn in on the planes. It's just very weird. Um, but yeah, the way that we celebrate JFK's death, pretty lowbrow, wouldn't you say? I mean.
For sure.
But what do you, but what do you, but what do you expect? Like I said, there's nothing, there's nothing to celebrate.
Do you um, do you sever, how's your anxiety level, Alex?
Uh, I mean, uh, honest to God, I used to drink, and I stopped drinking about three years ago. My anxiety basically went away. Um, oh, yes, it did. And let me tell you what helped.
No, I got this. Uh, do you feel like you can't avoid stress or anxiety? Are you in pain or having trouble sleeping? Or maybe you just like to have a calmer brain while you stay active? That's where our friends at KUSHY Dreams have solutions. KUSHY Dreams specializes in high-quality smokable CBD, and CBD has been shown to help with anxiety, depression, inflammation, pain relief, and it just might work for you. They have offer, they offer different indicisitiva blends, and you get to pick the mood that you want to experience. Relax, create hustle, peace, energy, and dream. Plus, there's no hangover because there's no high. Go to kushydreams.com for 20% off, uh, use the code CMP at checkout. I personally like the hustle blend or the energy blend, because I need a little pep in my step sometimes. Uh, whether you want to smoke beautiful bud or pre-rolls, KUSHY Dreams has you covered. The popular pre-roll joints are rolled in organic hemp paper and feature an even slow burn. Uh, flower is available in nitrogen-sealed cans and now humidity-controlled 1-ounce Mylar bags. It's top-shelf cannabis, ships discreetly to you and directly to all 50 states. You can get all the benefits of CBD, full flower, full spectrum, full flavor. We know you're sick of carts, what's a cart? Carts, vapes, and gummies, and want to smoke your CBD, and now you can enjoy all the benefits of cannabis without getting high. Go to kushydreams.com, that's K-U-S-H-Y dreams.com. Use promo code CMP to get 20% off. That sounds good right about now.
Chrissy, I feel like, I feel like I took all the energy out of the show. Like, you got, now I just want to.
Well, yeah, you kind of secretly livestreamed it to your own channel without telling me.
What that I, what that I brought, that I, that you're mad that I livestreamed, that I brought up Kevin? I'll delete it off my channel.
No, I'm definitely not upset about the Kevin thing. I just didn't know you were gonna be streaming it direct to your YouTube.
Well, I was gonna cross-stream it. I'll delete it. I just was gonna go live.
It's okay. I just was thrown off a little bit.
That I was live too, that I restreamed? I usually, when I would go on shows.
Yeah.
Why is that bad?
It's not a common thing.
Well, I know, a lot of people don't know how to work OBS like me.
You should be sharing my link to your fans, not having your own stream.
Oh my gosh, Chrissy, do not be like that!
It's just bad form, and I, and I wasn't prepared for it.
Wait, wait, you're serious? You really do think that that's bad, that bad a form? Because I restreamed the show?
Frank is yelling, yes.
He's yelling, what? I'll delete it! No, you can keep it. I just figured, why not go live? It opens up the super chats? I mean, it only benefits us by the, the audience members that don't follow you, Chrissy. Now see you, they might go, I put the link.
Honestly, the, there's 107 people watching this right now, which is like, less than half what I usually get. But that's fine. I think people are just, they don't know what stream to go to. It's not something I would have done. You share the link, not the, not the stream.
Well, it was a cry, oh my gosh, I didn't even think that that was bad. I always do this on every show that I go on, that I usually always restream it, because I use OBS. I'm just restreaming the everything. I'll delete it as soon.
No, no, no. So you do this all the time?
All the time. Whenever I'm live with somebody, I restream it. What? What are you talking about? As a guest?
He doesn't know. He's new.
Oh my God, Frank's mad too. What, what, okay, and I got $200 in super chats!
You know, I got, I think I got $5 in super chats, and you're doing my fucking show.
I know, okay, well, listen, it's just.
About money, but, but it's, it's bad for him.
You go on someone's podcast and share the link, then she goes on your podcast, and she shares the link.
Okay, okay, all right, all right.
Podcasts with people, but it's agreed upon before.
Okay, well, then it is bad. I have bad manners, but I wasn't trying, I'm not trying to do this to be like, uh, you know.
No, I know, I know.
I mean, I don't have, I don't have ulterior motives. Like, I'm not trying to stream the show to make it less viewers or to take, you know what I mean? I'm not. Now I'm a jerk. I should have talked to Kevin. Now I'm live. Well, how much could I mess this up, Chrissy? No, it's not!
My interview, and then asked your own questions and streamed it to your own channel. No big deal.
Oh my God, Chrissy, I asked you one question and I cross-streamed the show! Give me a break! I'm so bummed out. I don't even have pants on. All I'm trying to do is do a show. I'm just so sorry. I'm not even trying to do anything. You're acting like I'm trying to troll you. I'm on Team Chrissy Mayer. I'll do anything you need me to do. I'm at your comedy show. I'm buying tickets. I'm not trying to get the free tickets. I'm paying for my ticket. I'm trying to support you, and you're getting mad because I restreamed it. Give me a break! Please, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to do anything bad. And did I have bad manners? Maybe. I don't have good manners. I have terrible manners. I apologize. I'm sorry. I will end the stream.
I, it took, I was probably not even gonna say anything, because I'm so conflict averse. Um, but I just was like, no one really has ever done this, so that's why I said.
Exactly. Hey, well, that's, that's, that's another thing, Chrissy. Another thing. Primetime 999 is one of one. I'm the, no cookie cutter. A lot of people that, I'm just saying.
I take back all my compliments.
No, see, no, you're so nice! No, please, God, do not take it back.
I'm taking it back.
No, but listen, listen, Chrissy, this is another thing, is I know how to work the OBS so easy. So it's your show. I was, if you notice, it's, I'm doing all your show. I was just trying to restream. I'm not like, I could have taken your picture and put it on my overlay and make it look like my show. That is what I'm saying. I maybe would have seemed kind of malicious, but literally, I was just trying to restream this, so it would go to eight different other platforms, so more people would see it. I'm not really trying to do, do anything like.
Like, get your own super chats or anything?
Well, I mean, yeah, why would I not want a super chat? Why would I not want a super chat? But it's, that's not because.
Okay.
Why would I, why, why would I be mad that I had a super chat?
I'm not wondering why.
I'll split my super chats. How about this? How about this? I'll give you half my super chats.
Dirty, stolen super chats.
What? You're not stolen! You're not stolen! It's fair.
More money for Chrissy. Imagine Alex as a guest on.
Oh my gosh. Oh my God, you're making me sick.
You said, well, thank you for this new follower. Alex Stein sent me here.
Okay, so now I'm the a-hole. Now I'm the jerk. Listen, Chrissy, I'm a simp. I'm a Chrissy Mayer simp. Like, I don't know how this is even bad. Like, literally, I, I guess, I guess the.
It's not about the money. It's just, it's, uh, it's just about what I think is right.
Okay, well, let me tell you YouTube principles. I don't know them that well, I guess. And so, um, I guess.
Think of a metaphor. I'm trying to like, think of an example.
You can't.
It's like, eh, God, is it the equivalent of carrying a Netflix password instead of?
And then me leasing the pass.
And then you're charging people to watch your Netflix.
To watch your Netflix. I'm using, I'm using your Netflix. Yeah, Chrissy, I'm grifting off you by saying I'm a Chrissy Mayer. I'm not really grifting. No, it's not about the money. Oh my gosh. This is not, uh, this is the.
How would Elijah Schaefer react if you were restreaming, uh, You Are Here to your YouTube?
Well, I couldn't. If I was, I would have if I, if I could do it as his guest, because I've livestreamed when I was on Infowars. I restreamed when I was on Infowars. They didn't care about that.
They know though.
Well, I guess I didn't say anything. But I mean, I don't know why it's that big a deal to go live. I mean, I really don't think it's that bad.
Maybe I'm alone here. Look.
What are they saying in the chat? What are they saying?
He's just stupid sometimes. I don't know. You have your own chat going on.
Yeah, I know, but, but like they're getting, they're kind of clowning me in my chat. This is her show 100%. Listen, I don't know. What do you guys say? Am I in the wrong? One, ask your chat. One, I'm wrong. And two, I'm fine. So if you say one, I'm wrong, two, I'm fine.
Like copyright, Chrissy, when a movie says do not record this and then sell it to an audience. And it's like, and it's like right now Alex is the Korean lady in the subway with all the like bootleg DVDs trying to sell them.
Well, I'm deleting the stream as soon as it's over. The stream is going down. It's going, don't worry about it. But I, I did get to do the live part. I did get to.
No, it's okay. It's like, um, it's all right. Dee Watt says, I love your Frost impression. Thanks for the laughs. Thanks, Dee Frost. No, this was fun. Oh, I see. One, two, and one, one. I guess we're split.
Chrissy, don't be mad. Oh my gosh, please forgive me. I want to go, my, my dream is to go to the Poconos with you and Frank and to just relax and just to ski. And just, that's all I want to do. That's all I want to do. Do not poo poo on my parade. Do not let, do not let, this is, this is my whole day. I was so excited.
Get on your parade, but I might restream it without telling you.
And then you can always, that's, this is one thing though, Chrissy. This is one thing though. This is not advice or anything, but you should encourage people to share your stuff as much as possible, right?
Of course, sharing is one thing, but like restreaming it as if it's my own is something different.
I'm not trying to present it. I would, I'm not even trying to, I'm on the Chrissy Mayer show. If anyone's watching this right now, the 300 people that are watching, this isn't the Alex show.
I only have 120 people watching. This is what I'm talking about.
But that's just, this, you have, you have a bigger audience. It's just because I have more live viewers. It's just because of the, it's just because of the weird way that I go live all the time. It's not, your audience is actually bigger. But listen, I also had that viral video. So people are probably looking at my thing. It's not about that. It's not about.
Right now.
It's not about the size of the boat. It's about the motion in the ocean. Gosh, let me just, let me just, please.
Is here. Alex sent me.
Please forgive me, Chrissy. I was such a.
Wow, I thought we were gonna be friends. I thought I was gonna like, maybe, you know, bring you along with me.
No, no, please. I gotta come. Do not, do not put me in the same position as Kevin Brennan. Leave that loser behind. Let me, take me with you, Chrissy, please. Take me with you. Please.
I can't stay mad at you.
Seriously, I'll delete it. I'm gonna ta, I was actually planning on, I was actually planning on taking it down. I just was gonna let you have the show, I guess, as they say. I really was. But I just wanted to restream it to get it to more people. I promise I wasn't like trying, I didn't even think about the freaking, um.
Splitting the viewers or?
Who cares about the viewer? Oh my God, Chrissy.
The viewers. You just said you cared about getting it to more.
Gets it to more people. I don't think it splits it by showing it to more people. So I don't argue.
If you share my link, everyone just comes to the one place, but if.
That's not true. That's, that's not true. That's not true. Because my social media is much, my, your social media is a lot stronger than mine. My, my stuff, if I tweet out the link, hardly anybody goes to my YouTube link. And I'm not saying that to, I'm not saying that to be who, whatever. When my Twitter is crap. If I tweeted the link, I'm saying, if I tweeted the link, 25 people would come. Max, 25 people come.
Do you know how to share the YouTube link?
Yes.
YouTube?
Yes. Oh, on YouTube? Yes. Yes, I do know how to do that. And I will, I will share that right now. That's actually good.
I agree with K Max. Alex should buy Chrissy Sherry's berries to make peace. I do like those. They're chocolate dipped. They're very fancy.
I, I'm gonna have to buy you a lot of stuff now. I mean, now that, I mean, I'm getting killed.
It's one of my love languages.
Is that really true? Okay. Well, looks, I mean, I hope you like cash. Is it, do you like that gift?
No, I don't want cash.
Okay, well.
I'm not mad. This is just funny.
I, I actually think it is funny too. But, but literally, but honest to God, it's like, I'm really not trying to be malicious. I feel like, I hope you don't get the impression like I'm trying to troll you or anything. That's like the last thing by doing this live.
No, I don't feel trolled. No.
Okay, good. That's what I'm saying. I gosh, I was cat hair. No, now I'm getting anxiety. I hope you know, I was literally just trying to restream it. Okay, I should have shared the link. We're gonna take it down. Now we had this. Now I have to take it down. What did Frank say?
Right, right. You have to take it down because I'm gonna re-release this as its own.
That's what I figured. See, that's what I figured. That's why I figured it wasn't a big deal because you said recorded live. So I figured you were gonna restream it, honest to God. I swear. That's what I'm saying. You always repost it. So that's why I didn't figure, that's, my plan, honest to God, was to go live and then delete it after, and then you post it. That was my plan.
Okay. Sounds like a good plan.
Let me tell you something about my plans. My plans are, I go to places, Chrissy, and I dress in.
I feel like you're treating me like you treat the city council of Portland. That's how I feel right now.
Wow, how do you feel like that? Oh my God, Chrissy, when I go to the city of, of Portland, or when I'm in Dallas County, I'm in nurses scrubs, having, uh, I guess I am having a little bit of a mental breakdown here. But I'm saying, that's, I'm in, I'm an insane person. You cannot hold me to the same standards as a normal person.
I definitely do not.
I'm mentally ill. I go in front of board, boards, and I dress in nurse scrubs and I pour Purell on my face.
Where do you get those from? Do you have to order them online?
Walmart, walmart.walmart.in person.
Anybody can just buy nursing scrubs. Anybody can just buy a veteran hat with flags and shit on it. Anybody can steal any valor.
The FBI, the FBI can just buy any, uh, you know, like Carhartt jacket and walk around like they're, you know, MAGA.
Yeah, FBI, CIA can just send people into different groups to instigate hypothetically.
What a show today, Chrissy.
Chrissy has been known to display some impressive flexibility in the Poconos after having had some drinks. That is true. I have.
Chrissy, let's, let's talk about this. So the New Year's resolution, you're getting in the fitness game. How do we stay? I'm, I'm trying to do the same is what I'm saying. You know, in the past three months, I've gained literally 40 pounds, probably just from.
Well, you're grieving.
Well, this is why. And now I haven't gone in a month, but the last meals I had with my mom, because she couldn't eat, were McDonald's milkshakes. So, yeah, so I was feeding my mom milkshakes while she's, you know, taking the ventilator off her mouth, and not the ventilator, but the bipat machine. So for like the first two months of she died, I went to McDonald's every day and drank chocolate milkshake every day.
I feel you. My mom really loved coffee, Haagen-Dazs, and like, I'll get a pint and like curl up with it. Not like really seldomly now, but, um, for her birthday, I'd get a pint and I'd fucking toss it back. For her, of course, not because it's delicious. Ice cream. Ice cream grieving is okay. It's all good. Now I really want some.
I know. Why is the ice cream so good for the pain? It's like the only thing that, and I actually have been having less this past month. I have, I've lost about seven pounds this month. Have you, have you?
There you go.
I know, but I should have, I should have.
Covid again, so I could lose like that last 10.
I don't even think, when I had it, it didn't even, I mean, I guess I lost a little bit of weight because my throat was a little sore, but.
Look at this, look at this, from Aklydia, uh, Chlamydia. Chrissy, I only got a notification of Alex's live. You did not show up anywhere on my homepage or notifications. I wouldn't have known otherwise. Look at that. I guess we are a team here.
We're a team. Oh my God, that's another thing is we are a team. This is a Chrissy Mayer, Alex Stein teammates. We are teammates. I'm trying to help you. You're trying to help me. But I'm. I'm not, I'm not. I'm saying it's like a shark. You know, what is it? They have the stuff that eats the plankton. I'm just trying to eat a little bit of your plankton. Let a player have a little bit. You got enough.
It's not a shark. It's the little leech sucker that sucks onto the shark.
Little, you got it. That's what I'm saying. And it's not a leech. I'm not a leech. I'm a little fish and I just nibble at it. And it helps you because you get calluses if I didn't eat that plankton off you. So I'm doing you a huge favor that you don't even appreciate. Yes, you don't know the plankton. You, if you know, if you knew, if you knew about plankton calcification. No, I want your plankton. I want all your plankton. I want it extra calcified is how I want your plankton.
Thank you, chat. You're a Remora, Remora. Sounds like a, it sounds like a, a pretty black girl's name, honestly. Remora, Remora.
You know, it's funny. I'm, I'm, I'm celebrating the super chats, but you know more than anybody, it stinks because they take so much of the super chat. You know what I mean? So it's like.
Oh, YouTube?
Yeah, so it's so annoying, you know?
Yeah, apparently Stream Labs doesn't do that.
Yeah, that's what I have. I have Stream Labs, but they still, I, but I turned it where you can donate it through, uh, my super chat now. So now.
Stream Labs also?
Well, Stream Labs is what you use to stream. You see what I'm saying? Like Stream Labs is like OBS. So yes, you stream through there and you can use their thing, you know, if they have like a donation page. But I haven't got any donations, I believe, through there. All my donations have been through Super Chats. But yes, Stream Labs doesn't take anything. You should use Stream Labs, um, but the only thing is, uh, Streamer is easier. Cause the overlays, it's automatic, the sharing, like, you know, it does the automatic transitions. It's kind of annoying when you're using the OBS. It's like the transition stuff, it's not, it's not automatic. You know what I mean? So that's why Streamer is so much ea, so much user-friendly.
So easy to just take somebody's, uh, stream link and repost it as your own.
Yeah, that's that easy. It is the easiest. And look how nice it looks. It looks, you know, you have the overlay. But I'm just saying, you can figure out in two seconds how to use the Stream Labs. I'm not saying that. I'm just saying this, the advantage of Streamer is that it's just like user-friendly and that it, um, like, you know, the audio usually works and stuff with.
Oh, yeah. I started out using Zoom and then I graduated to Stream Yard. Um, so who knows what's in my future.
Well, all I know is, listen, I better be in that future or else I'm gonna have a nervous breakdown and I'm gonna start huffing paint. I'm gonna start huffing paint again. Yeah. And I haven't huffed paint in months.
Don't do that.
Have you ever done whippets, Chrissy?
No, I'm too busy to do drugs. Like, I really don't have time. I don't want to like be, I, I can't allow myself to be out of control for like four to six hours. You know what I mean? Like, I have shit to do.
But you've never done whippets, like tried nitrous oxide?
No.
Never at the Grateful Dead concert?
I have.
Yeah, but never at the Grateful Dead concert in Madison Square Garden? You didn't go to the Grateful Dead concert?
Curl up with a can of anything. I have shit to do.
No, they actually, whippets are one of the best drugs there is. I haven't done whippets in a while, but, uh, the last time I did it was for my dental. Well, don't do it. I'm just saying, I did it for my, I did it for dental work. You've, when you get it done, I mean, you get it for the dentist and they put it on your nose, they can take a drill to your mouth like, you don't even care. You have no anxiety. You have no, it's an anti-anxiety, uh, gas. It's really weird. Very scary. Life is very scary, Chrissy. You know that. Every day we wake up, it's a battle of good versus evil.
It really is. And we're, we're, you're one of the good guys, Alex, despite tonight.
Despite the restream, oh my God. And you know what's funny? And, and, and I've always been known as having bad manners. So it makes sense that, you know, of course I have more bad manners. Uh, this is an excuse for my bad manners. But I'm just saying.
Viral, twice.
You know I'm a douche, so you have to make fun of me, but listen.
You're great, Alex.
Chrissy.
We got Alex fans in the chat. Elsie Barrett, Alex Stein 99, on the time, on time and looking fine. You were, you were on time, which I appreciate.
See? I was on time.
Yeah, you're great. Uh, where can people find you and follow you? And, and what's, what cities, uh, city council will you be gracing your presence at?
I, I think, I think I'll be talking to the Cincinnati one tomorrow. They, they just went to, they're going to the Super Bowl, so I gotta, I gotta talk to them about that. And if you guys want to find you, go to pornhub.com slash three and a half inches soft.org. And that'll be my page and you'll see all my work. And if you go to the premium section, uh, it's only 17.99 a month and you'll get me fully spread out. You'll get the hole, you'll get the upper inner outside, you'll get every, you'll get the whole rectal temperature. You'll get a rectal temperature daily, rectal temperature live taken, and just a lot of other freebies and goodies at the 17.99 level. So if, I'd appreciate if you guys would support me there.
Awesome. Alex, thank you so much for coming on. Always good to see you, buddy. Very proud of you, for real proud of you and your work. Can't wait to, you know, see what the future holds. Probably more.
This stream will be, this stream, no, this stream is gone. This stream is like the ring. I don't even watch the ring, but how they throw the ring in the fire. I know that part of it. This is, this is only gonna exist in the Chrissy Mayer universe.
The girl gets a brand new doll for Christmas and she pulls the back and then it flies right into the fire.
No, but is, is that what this, that's what this is. I, I've watched, I love commercials too. I'm just saying. Is, but the doll is supposed to be alive? That seems kind of weird.
Flies into fire. I have to play, I have to play.
We gotta watch this. Cause I'm sure I've seen it. Cause like, you know, you know, that's where the only real acting gig I've ever gotten. I booked an AT&amp;T commercial as a principal actor and then a Zerk water bottle commercial. Yeah, yeah. A couple of commercials, yeah. Not that it's a big deal, but.
It's a big deal.
I guess I was like a sports fan.
Booking commercials and I stopped trying. Here we go.
Oh, this, that's what makes sense. I see why it flies. Yeah.
I love this so much.
On Christmas.
Why is it so good? It's so funny.
You know why it's so good too? Cause the mom points the camera down. You know, she's like not a real cameraman, you know, she's like so concerned. It's just, you can't even.
A real, a real videographer would have zoomed in on the fire.
You would, yeah, you would have been zooming in there. Like, I'm gonna be zooming to delete this stream and then, you know, forgive me for all my bad manners, Chrissy. Please, know that I'm a simp. Know that, but know that I'm a simp and that as a sucker, you know, that idolizes mediocre pussy, not calling you mediocre, is that I'm gonna make mistakes and that. I, I need, I need a little bit of deference, I guess, is all I'm asking.
And just like the doll flying into the fire, that's how we'll end this show. Thank you, Alex.
Bye, ah, the stream. Oh my God. Bye, oh my.